Welcome to our District 6 Town Hall meeting. Delighted you're here. You know, I overuse this metaphor, I know, but there's no rest for the weary or the wicked, as the case may be. We've been very busy at City Hall, and we've got some great news to share with you and some other matters. We've got a pretty chock-a-block full agenda. We may talk a little bit about the news that UCLA and USC have left the Pac-12 and are now part of the Big Ten, which is crazy to those of us that, you know, remember the Pac-8 and the Pac-10 and the traditional sort of rivalries and all, but it's a new day in college sports, and I think generally we're excited about what this means for the Rose Bowl, which is our primary interest in college sports, other than just as fans and what have you. But I do want to start with the agenda, and we have public safety as first. I saw Chief Augustine and Chief, you know, Jason Clausen, interim Chief Clausen, here, and I said, you know, this is 65 or 70% of my general fund budget right here. These two gentlemen was teasing, but I think public safety is always top of the list for our residents. What you really expect from your city is that when you need a first responder, be it a medical call or a public safety call, a criminal matter, that they'll answer, and someone in a uniform will respond, and our departments do a wonderful job. So Chief Clausen, Chief Augustine, please come on up. And as they are making their way, I do want to mention first that I want to express my solidarity personally to all law enforcement, all public safety, for the tragic murders of the two officers in El Monte. We have too many guns, notwithstanding, what, five Supreme Court justices, five or six, say, too many guns in our community. We see every day, we get a noteworthy report about public safety, and there are just far, far too many crimes involving guns, and we need to redouble our efforts on that front. So Chief Clausen, Chief Augustine, thank you for being here, and please share with us what you can about public safety in West Pasadena.
Good evening. For those I haven't met, my name is Chad Augustine, and I'm your Pasadena Fire Chief. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've been in Pasadena now about 16 months and just having so much fun. So I just want to give a quick update on just a handful of topics, and am more than happy to answer any questions you might have. So as we look at our fire season, as we're coming into 2022, last year was one of the worst fire seasons in California history, and I don't need to tell any of you that, that we're in a very high fire-prone area. Last year had over 8,800 fires, burned over 2.5 million acres with three fatalities, and over 3,600 structures were lost up and down the state. And it was just, like, every year, California has been saying, this is the worst fire season in history, and then the next year comes and it's the worst fire season in history. So this year, and I 100 incidents up and down the state this year, and this is strictly for wildland fires. Over 21,000 acres have been burned, and 97% of LA County is in severe drought. I'm sure most of you know, in the last 128 years of tracking, the month of May was the driest on record. So as we come into a fire season, we only have to look to our neighbors to the south in Laguna Niguel to see fire conditions that we would normally see in Southern California, September, October. We're seeing them in June and July, so the risk is very real. So what is your Pasadena Fire Department doing? And I'm going to look back to one of my members right there and thank him, because in Pasadena, our firefighters do a tremendous amount of extra work to help keep our residences safe. And they performed over 4,000 inspections in our high-hazard areas, of which many of you are in. There's been extensive brush clearance in the last few weeks. Thank you to the CCC and some of our city agencies. And many of you have sent emails asking for additional clearance on some vacant lots in areas where traditionally there hasn't been brush clearance in the last few years, and there was extensive effort amongst many city departments. When I came here 16 months ago, I came here from Northern California, and I looked up above the Rose Bowl and saw my version of Oakland Hills coming from Northern California. And as many of you know, in 1990, Oakland Hills had a devastating fire, and poor water supply, lack of access and egress, and while slightly different, there's many similarities. And so we immediately started working on an evacuation plan because there wasn't one in place, and rightfully so. Many of the residents said, hey, that's great, you're working on this small area, but how about the whole city? And we recognized that the nine months it took us to work on a small evacuation plan, it would probably take us three years to do a citywide, and that timeframe is not acceptable. So we were able to find existing funds. Thank you to council. They approved a contract with a consultant, and that work should be starting in the next few weeks with the completion time of the end of the year for the entire city, which, while I hope we never need to use it, it really does give me peace of mind that there'll be an evacuation plan in place for the entire city. And then, Pasadena's small. We have 51 personnel on duty each day, and for a normal day, that's adequate for this city, but when we have a large fire, especially when there's complexity involved with some of the terrain that we have in our neighboring agencies, that's not enough resources. And so we worked hard to update our agreements with some of the larger partners, and that's the feds through the A&amp;F. It's also with LA City and LA County, and the things that they have that we really care about is aircraft, because in some of the terrain that's around here, it's difficult for us to get personnel there quickly, and you can really knock down a lot of fire quickly with aircraft. And so I'm pleased to be able to say our contracts are all up to date, and while I hope we don't need to use those resources, if there is a need, they'll be here assisting Many of you know Lisa Dordarian. She's a good friend and is always talking about just being ready in the event of an emergency. So this is my plug for you, especially on a weekend like this, July 4th. We spent a lot of time this morning. We did a press conference at the Rose Bowl, and then we sprayed all the areas around the Arroyo and Linda Vista with our FOZ check, and that, many of you are familiar with that. It's a clear retardant. It really helps prevent the spread of fire. It limits or prevents those materials from actually catching on fire, and that material will be there until it rains. So it gives us some protection for the next few months, but we're really concerned about this 4th of July weekend with lots of fireworks. So my challenge to each of you is be prepared. If there is an emergency, have a go-bag. Be prepared, be self-sufficient for 24 to 72 hours, having some items like a flashlight, some cash, your prescription medications if you have a pet, like I have a dog, making sure that you have some medications or food for your dog also, so that when that emergency does happen and we're knocking on your door, you're very well-prepared. This year's been really successful so far on our fireworks, and I would like to say that the fireworks task force, which has been a partnership between Pasadena Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, with the prosecutor, and Pasadena Fire Department, there's really, the illegal fireworks to date are down. There's been a lot of surveillance. There's been a lot of just good work, but the most important dates are coming with this weekend, and so we'll be doubling our efforts. We'll be making sure that we have patrols out and that we're doing everything we can to limit illegal fireworks. Switching gears, we were able, us, the Fire Department, and multiple other city departments were able to utilize space at Jefferson Elementary, and in the history of Pasadena Fire, we've never had a training center. And so when our personnel need to do a recruit training or in-service training, we frequently have to go to other cities to do that. And with the support of council and many other people, we've been able to occupy space now at Jefferson Elementary. And so last week, we started a 16-week Fire Academy with 18 trainees, and additionally, that facility will allow us to, all of our on-duty personnel, to come there for simulator training, all sorts of different training. And our staffing right now is the best it's been in 15 years. We're almost fully staffed in every division, which I'm really pleased to be able to report And with that, I'll turn it over to any of you for any questions. And if it's more appropriate, I can also let Chief Clausen present, and then the two of us can do Q and A.
Can you repeat again the number of fireworks on fire on duty on given day?
We have 51 personnel on duty each day, and that's across eight fire stations. We have eight fire engines, two ladder trucks, and five rescue ambulances that are on duty each day, and one battalion chief who's in charge of supervising all the city.
Can we talk about, can we find out the evacuation plan?
Yes. So the evacuation plan that we worked on over the last nine months, we were able to hire one of the best fire mapping personnel in the country, so that what that allowed us to do was do modeling, predictive modeling, of how our fire would behave in specific areas around the Linda Vista area, and then utilize, based on wind conditions and current weather, where that fire would go if we had a fire right now or tomorrow afternoon, and then be able to prescribe specific evacuation routes around that fire. So to answer your question, yes and no, right? Because it depends on where the fire is at and what the modeling is and what the behavior of the fire is doing, that would be, it's important for us that we send out accurate information on the best routes to evacuate, so that we're not sending people into a danger, rather into a route that is the safest way for them to evacuate. We will be, what is important also to note, our consultant, which their name is Constant, will be doing multiple town halls with that, with the neighborhood associations to get feedback, and we've already been able to secure a couple different town halls specifically for our association groups that are in the highest fire hazard areas. So we look forward to hearing your feedback with the consultant on the things that are important to you. And then, once that's done, that will be published.
Should we maybe about 16-week Fire Academy? How many recruits are in this academy?
We started, yep. So the question is, how many recruits are in this academy? This is the largest Fire Academy in the history of Pasadena Fire. We started with 18. We currently have 17, with an expected graduation date of 16 weeks down the road. I just left them before I came here, and it was the end of another long week, but they're all in good spirits and they're working really hard, and I think they're going to be great additions to the city of Pasadena. Yes, sir?
I wonder, last week, you were going to let roll fireworks. I understand you're using some kind of a three-dimensional audio listening system to able to shoot shots, but can that be used also to load a fire?
Do you want to take?
It does capture, it does capture
explosions in the neighborhood, but we're not utilizing that for fireworks, because fireworks can go off, but can be launched from like five houses away or a mile away. And the question was, can our ShotSpotter technology, which is utilized to detect gunfire, can it be used for firework enforcement? It captures data, and we can mine the data, but it would be useless to just have somebody on that project, because it would be hours and hours and hours of digging in to look for a fireworks violation that may or may not have occurred at the area where it registered.
How do we interface with Los Angeles? Because every night in West Pasadena, we hear booming fireworks, but it's coming from Los Angeles, not Los Angeles.
Do you want to take that one?
Your question was, how do we interact with
How do we interface with the city of Los Angeles when they're having illegal fireworks? Because every night in West Pasadena, we hear booming fireworks.
Yeah, northeast Los Angeles, we can call the, we, the police department can call the police department there. Citizens can also call there and ask for service. Service calls to see what they're working and what's occurring in their neighborhood. I don't personally know what their mitigation enforcement plan is, but I do, I live in the city of Los Angeles, and I hear and I'm affected, and I have the shared concerns with you now.
I want to really try to move along on the agenda, so maybe one more question for this segment, and then Chief Clausen, please.
I have actually a hard question.
I sure can.
One is, is your projection time between when a fire is identified and the police, are the fire department able to respond to where the fire is? That's one question, a projection time. And does LA County have large airplanes ready for airdrops on a fire in case there was a fire coming?
The first question, we recently, a few months ago, had a fire near the Arts Center. So the question was, our response time once a fire is called in? And the second question was, does LA County have aircraft resources on the ready? The last wildfire we had was actually called in by Pasadena PD, their air ops, and they frequently have a helicopter in the air most of the day and the evening, which is really helpful for us. They gave us great intel, which allowed our crews to get to the area within just a number of minutes. And so that type of intel is really helpful for us. And secondly, LA County Fire does have, they have multiple, I think seven or eight helicopters, and then the feds have aircraft, fixed-wing aircraft, that are on the ready. The drawback to that is, is they have to not be on another mission.
Thank you, Chief Augustine. My name is Jason Clausen. I'm the interim police chief for the city of Pasadena. I'm honored to be here on this journey as the interim chief. And when I took over in the beginning of May, I knew that I was not just a, somebody that was filling a seat. I need to move this department forward for the benefit of the city. I know that my goals remain contemporary, that we need to reduce crime, we need to provide hope, calm fears, and maintain order. I think that we can do that through communication, a little bit of common sense, some logic, and a concern for people. And as we work together, we, the police, need to connect deeper in our community and build safer neighborhoods through collaborative efforts. I've had many operations, or excuse me, opportunities to partner with community-based organizations, nonprofits, and the clergy, to see how we can work collaboratively to solve community issues. It's not always the police coming in and, you know, doing prevention, intervention, and enforcement, but it's collaborative efforts that we need to get together and solve community issues. There are so many things at the top of crime prevention and/or agendas today that drive how the police operate. We know gun rights is big right now. Last Tuesday, the Supreme Court made a decision about carrying concealed weapons in public. Within an hour and 53 minutes, I got an email from a constituent that says, I want to apply for a gun permit. How do I do it? Change your policy today, because the Supreme Court said so. We have to slow things down. I told the constituent that the ink is wet. We need to figure out the process, because I know right now, the sheriff of Los Angeles County, who does issue concealed weapons, I believe that the number was 3,300 weapon permits he issued last year. He is expecting 30,000 to 55,000 people applying for guns to carry concealed weapons, and the Supreme Court's basically struck down the actual need for somebody to carry a weapon. You have to show need, but they're not asking that anymore. So that's on the top of our list. Women's rights are also on the top of our list, too. And we monitor social media, we monitor state and city policy or public policy. One of the things I know in this area as well is that people are really concerned about traffic and traffic mitigation and traffic enforcement. We actually did a recent study of our high collision intersections and our complaint locations that we have through citizen complaints about people speeding, running stop signs, and there are a couple of the locations in this section of town, specifically around California Pasadena Avenue, and even at the, I believe it's California and Arroyo Boulevard, where there's lots of activity that drive us, drive our motorcycle officers down there. And it's very important, my child goes to Mayfield, I see the cops there all the time, and I know that they're out there enforcing public, or excuse me, vehicle code violations. But we're not all about enforcement either. We want to correct driving behavior, and we did a statistical analysis, and we knew that last year, from end of, beginning of May to last year, May, we issued 6,564 traffic citations in town for moving violations. But we, of those, 1,800 were just warnings. So we're not out to try to, you know, stick it to the citizens to have them pay fines, because sometimes all it is, is a red light in your rearview mirror. It helps you correct your behavior, and that's really what we're looking for. But other issues that are occurring, that are emerging through technology, cybercrimes, specifically theft of bitcoins and wire transfers, and, you know, that's the emerging trend on how we are dealing with technology. I was listening to someone speak, and they said, within 10 years, paper currency and coins are going to be obsolete. And I see that, how times have changed over the years. So we need to be better at our technology and not just, we have to train the officers to conduct these investigations. And these are things we really never thought about. Catalytic converter thefts, those are on the rise. You know, one month, we had, I believe, 66 catalytic converters stolen in Pasadena. The thieves are out there, they can be under your car, and within 30 seconds, be in and out and to take your catalytic converter. And what they're really doing is trying to get the magnesium out of the catalytic converter. It's just a simple part that's used, and they go and they recycle these devices, or they recycle the equipment at recycling centers that do this. So we're trying to do some efforts. We've done some etching of catalytic converters at local businesses. One car retail place that we put, etched the license plate, or someone's driver's license number, or a VIN number on the catalytic converter, because it's simple that if we stop somebody that has four catalytic converters in their backseat, we don't know, we don't know who they belong to, and we'll never be able to charge them or restore you as a victim to get your property back. So those are the things we're looking at as well, and I think that, you know, as we move forward, some of the things that I really, I'm concerned with, with, not concerning to my department, but just the community in general, is we need to continue to build trust, we need to have oversight and look at our policies and how we can change our policies, we need to address technology, we need to create needs for technology, not just chase after it, because we'll chase it for years and we'll never get it. June 1st, we went live with VersaTerm System, which is our new computer-aided dispatch and records management system, and we hadn't had to upgrade in over 30 years for this technology. So everything is new, and what's going to happen is, I know that a lot of people look at crime details. We used to have the police blotter through public, or not, for a public website that you, as a community member, can look at to see what's happening in your area. That technology went down. We're installing new technology to read our data, because what's going to happen is crime is going to spike, and we know it's going to spike, because the old way, we used to handle reporting crimes to the FBI, because we're mandated to, if there was a carjacking and a pursuit with gunfire and a crash and an officer injured, that would be classified as a carjacking. But this new system, it's called NIBR, the National Incident-Based Reporting System, that we are reporting to the state of California, that uploads to the national database, we now are reporting every crime that occurred during that one incident. So the carjacking would be reported, the pursuit would be reported, the officers injured would be reported, the gunfire would be reported. So that one incident now is an accumulation of five different crimes. So as this new technology is mining the data and pushing data sets out to the community, you're going to see crime increase. But one of my goals is to come to public safety with a broader explanation of how the crime is being captured and what we're reporting to the FBI. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, and it was a tragic incident, there was a doctor at Huntington Hospital that went on a walk, and the next thing you know, she was assaulted by a homeless member, walking, a homeless male walking down the street without cause, and she was severely injured. Two weeks later, we actually arrested the suspect, and he's been charged with two felony crimes, and he's sitting in the county jail right now. But this is something that we really have to address, mental health, homelessness. I know that, you know, the housing rights people are here, we're in full support of everything we can do to help the people that are critically most in need. We've seen that sometimes with the methamphetamine problem that has existed, those chemicals will alter people's brains, that we can never try to get them back on track. But there's a lot of different things that we're looking at, on how we can change the future and provide public safety and neighborhood livability, so you're not trapped inside your homes and feel that we're not listening, because we listen. And if we hear something, we can change our policies, we can change our procedures. So please, you know, welcome us as your partner. And with that, I'll take any questions.
The city of Los Angeles is trying to push legislation or ordinances to go after people who recycle auto parts, such as catalytic converters, and this could be something here that we would do in Pasadena. We get information about possible recyclers or people taking these catalytic converters and/or people who used to steal airbags, but we haven't got any information who may or may not be doing it, or haven't been led to a scene, or been tipped off to any body shop, let's say, in Pasadena, because we know there's a lot of them up and down Arroyo Parkway and on Walnut. But, you know, that's something that, if we need to do it, we will do it, to help bolster when we arrest people, the consequences, so.
Okay. Thank you, both chiefs. Can we have a round of applause for our public safety? And I just, a couple of follow-ups. Want to give a shout out to Lieutenant Chris Sharma, who's one of our area commanders who's here. We have K-9 officer back there. Great to see you, sir. And we have some of our firefighter paramedics here as well, so thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Couple of quick follow-ups. You know, I sit on the Public Safety Committee, as does Mayor Gordo, who I'll introduce just momentarily, but we do pay attention to all of these things. You know, we just adopted our fiscal year 2023 budget. It's soaking wet with all of the city's funds. It's $955 million, so almost a billion-dollar budget. And, you know, I advocate, as I know the mayor does, for more traffic officers in particular, you know, traffic and congestion and accidents. That could be exacerbated a little bit, too, with the continuance of the on-street dining program that we rolled out during COVID. We've made a policy decision that we'd like to continue to support the restaurants and the community by having those lane closures in most of the places, and we're developing policy as we speak to cover the costs of that, but it is an impact on traffic. I also regularly complain, and the staff probably gets tired of hearing me, but, you know, about the Uber drivers who think they can just stop in a lane of traffic and put on their flashing red lights and run into the restaurant, and that impedes traffic as well. On Union, for example, you see that quite a bit. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're working on. Certainly, Fire Department, extremely important to our district. The chief mentioned eight fire stations. We have three of the eight in our city council district, 38, 39, and 31 on South Fair Oaks, so those are extremely important to us as well. So I want to turn now to something that really deserves its own evening of celebration, and I'm sure we'll work on that at the appropriate time, but last evening, we achieved an historic accomplishment for the city of Pasadena, for the region, really for the whole state. I mean, to hear the members of the California Transportation But last evening, we achieved an historic accomplishment for the city of Pasadena, for the region, really for the whole state. I mean, to hear the members of the California Transportation Commission tell it, they were completely unfamiliar with this. It's just not something they do. But last night, after decades of fighting the freeway and then the tunnel and then, you know, every iteration of, of that, we achieved a relinquishment of the 710 stub to the city of Pasadena. Wow. So I want to just say a few more words about that, maybe as I do. Mayor Victor Gordo, who's been a real champion for the city and for all of us on this, could come up and I'll invite him to say some words too. But let me sort of continue the, the intro to this. I mean, first of all, such a long, long battle, you know, there, there's a joke in Hollywood that after 30 or 40 years, someone becomes an overnight success, you know? And this was just literally decades of freeway fighters and community-based true grassroots opposition. And, you know, so many people in this room, and I want to just acknowledge a few of them, I'm sure I'll omit someone, it's not for, for malice or ill will, but Bill and Claire Bogard, I mean, led the fight against the 710 for decades. And as, as mayor and Claire and her, you know, active life for the community and all, you know, by the way, we will be having an event later this summer to dedicate the courtyard at City Hall, Bill and Claire Bogard Courtyard. And I'll make sure that, yeah. That passed on a four to three vote of the city council. No, I'm kidding. Wasn't that close. But I'll make sure you all get an invitation to that event. It's gonna be really a fun and well-deserved celebration. Mick Hansen is here. She's been a freeway fighter for decades as well. I'll tell you, our, our mayor was, was in Sacramento. He testified in person. I was in Pasadena and testified by video and audio. I had testified back in January as well at a preliminary hearing of the, the commission. Our state senator, Anthony Portantino, was just stand-up on this issue. And, you know, it's like I had a basketball coach in college who used to say, you know, if it was easy, everybody'd be great, you know? It's really inspiring words. If it was easy, everybody would be great. And this was not easy. I mean, and I'm not talking about anyone being great, but the greatness of this accomplishment. It was not easy. Right up until the final vote, you know, we had to fend off various offers of help, you know? And in Sacramento, that means opposition dressed up to look like it's help. And I just want to acknowledge Dominic Corey, who works with Senator Portantino and has, who's been great on this. Thank you, Dominic. One of the first things we did when we sort of embarked on this phase, and just as a reminder, you know, when Bill and I came on the council in 1999, this was an issue that we were working on right from day one. And in 2000, we succeeded in garnering five votes to oppose the policy of constructing a freeway through Pasadena, the 710 extension. And regrettably, one of our colleagues on the council at that time ran a citizens ballot initiative, which, a referendum, if you will. There was quite a bit of special interest money that was, was interested in supporting that and it, it did carry. And so we had to operate under the constraint for some time thereafter of the official policy per this ballot referendum of being to support the freeway, even though we knew what a travesty it was and what a debacle. Then when the, the freeway moved into this tunnel phase, that gave us an opportunity to oppose, you know, that iteration of it, notwithstanding that prior, you know, ballot initiative, whatever weight you might give it. And I actually ran three separate motions by my colleagues to oppose the tunnel. And, you know, the third time's a charm, I guess, because the first two failed and then the final vote did pass. And that was an historic, you know, benchmark in, in my view, in terms of the, the city really coming together and opposing through the elected representatives, opposing the, the tunnel at that point. We've negotiated and executed an agreement with Caltrans that handles some of the costs and the other details of the actual conveyance. And there were actually two items on the agenda yesterday. One was the, the sort of conceptual relinquishment and the policy judgment. And then the second was the ratification of that agreement, including the payment by the state to the city of certain costs, the attendant with the relinquishment. But the staff person put it so beautifully in his report on the second item. He said, this members of the commission, this action will result in the permanent conveyance of all property interests and rights from the state to the city of Pasadena in perpetuity. And that was unanimous, as was the vote on the relinquishment. So it was really wonderful. You know, one of the first things we did though is we engaged the best consulting team that you could possibly imagine for, you know, such a bold and audacious initiative as this. And that is David Granis and Tony Harris, his partner. And I think David is still here. I know he had a son who may be flying in, but there's David. Can we please give it up for David Granis? Yeah. Thank you, David. And a resident of Pasadena, constituent of mine. I've never dared ask how he votes when we have council races, but David's a great friend. And really, you know, there were federal actors that were involved, state actors. And again, you know, nothing's easy if it's worth accomplishing. And David really led us very expertly. And of course, Cynthia Kurtz, our interim city manager, you know, just on a host of levels. I'm so grateful for Cynthia, the fact that she was able to be our interim city manager during this period. Imagine someone, you know, trying to step in pretty much overnight, last December, when Steve Mermel decided to retire. It would have been very difficult for somebody that didn't have the history and the knowledge. So thank you, Cynthia, as well. So Victor, you know, observations, you know, your take on this. And thank you for being in Sacramento. It's a scary, scary place up there. I know.
You know, I, I simply, and thank you, Steve. I think he gave a, a good history and so I won't go into it. But it, it really is a momentous occasion for the city of Pasadena and for everyone who's ever had a hand. I was proud to be there together with Steve and make the arguments. The commission really did seem to start slipping a little bit, but I think together we were able to pull them back in. And thank you to Anthony Portantino, Senator Portantino, for his efforts as well. And he was right there. And I, I just have to say, you know, this is a generational win. You know, this is a fight that's gone on and on. And there are some very, very important and valuable players. We all deserve to celebrate this as a community and we will. And Steve and I'll coordinate that. But certainly our mayor, you know, people call me mayor and I say, well, I, I have a mayor too, and that's Bill Bogard. And Claire Bogard, who, and Mick, and, and some of the others that Steve has mentioned, who are in this room, who have fought for decades and generations to see this victory. But I, I wanted to be here today to say thank you to all of you, but particularly to my friend, Steve Madison. For 23 years, Steve has served on the city council. And, and look, when I became mayor, I said, I'd like to see Steve Madison's to-do list for the past 23 years. And so I got a copy of them. And on his to-do list, his first day in office was defeat the 710. Item number one. Items two through 20 were to be determined. And it was like that for 23 years. It was defeat the 710. And I've sat and I've worked with him. I've sat next to him and I've worked with him for those years and I've watched him work very hard for this moment. And so I'd like to give him a round of applause for his efforts.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also present Steve with an award that I'll be presenting to many people in this room who have come together. We put this award together today. Thank you to Vanya and the city staff for scurrying to, my field representative, Vanya de la Cuba, who scurried to put this together. Because this is a momentous occasion. And unfortunately, we could only put one together because this is a recent victory. So this, Steve, is a momento of the victory. And it's actually, if you'll help me out here.
Yep.
From the bottom, hold it from the... So our great acting city manager, Cynthia Kurtz, Vanya and I got together and said, well, what do, what do we present? And so it's an actual piece of concrete from the stub, something that thanks to Steve and all of your efforts, we will not see more of in the future. And so I wanted to present this to Steve. And if you look closely, there's a little tombstone there that says, Rest in Peace 710. So again, congratulations. And we'll have more of these at our celebration. We do deserve to celebrate as a community and we will do that. I think it's important for us to celebrate and take a moment to, to thank one another and then recommit ourselves to the process of reimagining and restitching this part of our city, recognizing that it's a gateway to beautiful neighborhoods on the west, a gateway to a very important historic business district, not just for Pasadena, but for the country. But also an important cord, mobility corridor and corridor for public safety as an access point to the hospital. And so Steve and I look forward to working with all of you. We look forward to celebrating and then starting the work of reimagining our city and this part of our city. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, so much. Mayor Victor Gordo, everyone, tremendous leadership and many more victories in our future. Victor, I know. It does leave the question of sort of what now, you know? So we do have a lot of ideas and we don't have plans yet. There's sort of an urban myth that there's some plan that will be immediately rolled out and forced on the community. I promise you, that's not the case. There was some preliminary work done over the recent years about what if, you know? But really, now the process begins anew. Once the, the transfer of title is recorded with the county, we will convene. And I know that the staff is already thinking and talking about a very robust outreach and planning process. It's an amazing opportunity to, you know, vision and imagine what this huge parcel in the heart of our city should look like. I know that it is an opportunity in part to reconnect and repatriate communities, low-income communities, communities of color. The history there is quite remarkable. If you don't know about it, I, I recommend that to you to learn about that. And that will certainly be part of, of the discussions going forward. But huge opportunity for us and we're very, very excited about it. So much more to come on that. Thank you very much. So I told my friend Jeff Kitelinger, who's our interim Water and Power Director, that he had a tough act to follow because, you know, here the mayor and I announced the relinquishment of the 710 and now, you know, want to see what Water and Power has to offer. Perhaps a little more prosaic, but extremely important. And Jeff is also the interim director. And again, so grateful. Jeff ran the biggest, probably the biggest water agency in the country. I mean, I'm not an expert on that, but with the Met, which is a major, major player, you know, really globally in terms of water. So we're delighted that he's been serving our Water and Power. And Jeff, come on up and tell us what's the latest at Water and Power. Thank you. Jeff Kitelinger.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Madison and Mayor Gordo. And it's actually incredible accomplishment as an environmental lawyer training and background. The blocking of the 710 freeway started with the passage of Sequa in 1973. So it's 50 years. It's a 50-year issue. You don't see many 50-year issues resolved. So that was tough to follow. And I'm gonna follow it with lots of grim news, so, on water and power issues. You know, climate change is really impacting pretty much the whole water and power world. And it's doing so at an incredibly fast rate. We've, in, in the business, we have not seen it go this fast. Pleased to see Pasadena 100 here. They're advocating for 100% clean power. It is something that's on the agenda for everywhere in California. But I really want to talk about the drought because you're gonna hear a lot about drought over the next three months. And that's gonna be first and foremost. So I'm gonna take just a few minutes here and focus on that. When you look at what's going on in California, the last three years have been drought years. The last year has been the, one of the three driest years ever in recorded history. We think going back to 1,500 years and tree ring analysis, that's how dry it's been. And the last three months, California gets about 80% of its precipitation in the first three months of the year. The first three months of this year shattered, in fact, they are drier than anything we've ever seen in tree rings any time ever. Basically, we got zero precipitation, January, February, March, where we get 80%. So California really going through a historic drought. And in the water business, we've kind of stopped saying drought. We're saying iridification, which is really not a very good word. But it really is basically saying, what we're seeing is a drying up of the Southwest due to climate change. Higher temperatures are really driving a shift. So where does Pasadena get its water? About a third from the Raymond Basin. And that's shrinking because the Raymond Basin isn't getting any local rainfall. And so there's less to pump. The other two-thirds of our water comes from Metropolitan Water District, my old employer. And Metropolitan gets its water from two places, Northern California, which is going through tremendous drought, and the Colorado River. The Colorado River has been in non-stop drought since the year 2000. And it's in its driest ever recorded history period in the last 20 years. So the long-term prognosis is pretty challenging on the waterfront in the American Southwest. So I want to give you some good news. Here's some of the good news. For California, we're seeing a shift in precipitation, but the models are showing California is still gonna get a significant amount of water in the northern part of the state. It's just not gonna be snow, it's gonna be rain. But it's something we can work with. We can capture, we can move it, we can move it into groundwater basins. And so there is real opportunities to start looking at how to capture and move rain that's coming in just, you know, quick storms instead of the snowpack. The other tremendous news really has to do with the efforts of residents and constituents. We have gotten so much better at our use of water. In 1990, California had 14 million people, Southern California had 14 million people, and used about 5 million acre feet for that 14 million people. So we measure water in acre feet, that's 326,000 gallons. It's a football field a foot deep. In this year, we're going to use about 3.5 million acre feet. So about 30% less water for 20 million people. So we've basically decoupled growth from water use. And we've actually shrunk water use from even our historic levels. Pasadena, in fact, is using water in about the level that we used in the mid 1950s. And you look at everything we've added, all, all this new residents right across the street here. All that has moved in and we've managed to shrink the water use. So we've shown we can do a lot with a lot less. And that's good news. And it will prove to be steady going forward. But we're gonna need everybody to continue to work on this issue. Pasadena was very proactive. Last August, we went to a Level 2, which is two days a week watering and all sorts of other restrictions. State of California just did this as of June. So Pasadena was almost a year ahead of the state of California getting there. We are going to move in November to one day a week watering. We're already ripping out all the non-functional turf and saying you can't water that anymore. And so we're taking all those steps to continue to shrink Pasadena's water usage and deal with the drought. So a lot of steps coming. We're gonna see a lot of activity. We're gonna be rolling out information to residents. There's lots of good rebates available. We have a table back here. We got Renee and Lucio and now some of our team, Natalie, out there. So go- So go over there and get some, you know, information on where to get your rebates for your low-flow showerheads, your front-loading dishwashers and clothes washers that are high efficiency, and continue to do that good work. And I'm going to leave it there, because I know we're already running really short on time, and I'll look to wherever Councilmember Madison is. But I can always take a question, too, if anybody asks me questions. So thank you for that.
I have some trees on my property.
Water them.
Oh, water them?
Yes.
Right, but you know, I have a cold, very, very, found that I want to know how much water to give.
Ah. So the question is, should we continue to water trees, and how much water specifically should we give them? So yes, you should continue to water trees. Part of what's really going on with climate change is everything's getting hotter. The ways to keep cities cooler are trees. They're the best mechanism for keeping them trees. So keep them watered. You know, water your lawns as little as possible, but continue to water your trees. As for each type of tree, it's all a little specific, and I'm not an arborist, but we know, we have people that we can connect you up with in Parks and Recreation that can help you know exactly how much to water each specific kind of tree. You can contact the Parks and Recreation through our website, and you can also contact our water department. Just go over there and talk to Renee. She's there in the white hat, and she'll tell you who to contact and get that information.
As well as Public Works for City Trees. I know we get a lot of inquiries about city trees and who's responsible for those and the like, and so, yep. Okay, Jeff, thank you so much for being here. Another local I neglected to mention as well, so. And I neglected to say, Mayor Gordo, thank you so much again for the memento, and I accept it on behalf of everybody that's here, believe me. So thank you. I want to go slightly out of order. I want to get Jens Whedon, the new CEO and general manager of the Rose Bowl up. Daryl Dunn's retirement actually was today, so after 23 years, Daryl has stepped away from running America Stadium, the Rose Bowl. And Jens, I think you know I mentioned the news about UCLA and USC leaving the Pac-12, and, you know, probably too early to handicap what that means for the Rose Bowl, but welcome, and tell us. I want to mention that the mayor was the president of the RBOC for many years. I'm on the RBOC currently as the council rep, and Michael Hurley, my dear friend, is on the RBOC as well, so you've got a couple of your board members here, so be warned about that. And I'm just kidding. Thank you, Jens. And Jens just got this job, too. He was just hired by the RBOC, and he was clearly the best person for the job, and we're delighted, so thank you.
Thank you. So go easy on me, is what Steve's saying. This is my first day. But I have to thank Steve. He didn't make me go after the mayor, he made me go after drought, which I appreciate. He did steal the breaking news on UCLA and USC, which we are very excited about, and we think is going to be great for our future. But I have my own breaking news. I was telling him, the reason I was a little bit late today is I actually coached the District 6 Little League team, and I'm happy to say that the nine-year-old All-Stars beat those cheaters over from Sierra Madre, eight to four. So, big win for District 6 today, so. I'm really excited to be here, as Steve mentioned. I've actually been with the Rose Bowl for nine years. My prior role was Chief Revenue Officer, and I'm really excited for the future of the Rose Bowl and to be part of that. This is our centennial. The Rose Bowl Stadium turns 100 years young this year, which is a pretty amazing thing. A building that was built for one event a year has evolved into something that's still relevant 100 years later. And that's really what we believe our job is, is to make sure that that building stays relevant, that there's never a moment or a moment in time when people walk up and look at the Rose Bowl and say, it's beautiful, and they used to have events here. Our job is to make sure that it stays around, and that evolution has included a lot of things. UCLA coming to play here, we have a flea market, we do enterprise events, we do music, and it really is a testament to the city of Pasadena that we've been able to use this national historic landmark for so many different things. One of the things I'm most proud of is during the pandemic, we pivoted and we became a place that was helping. We housed FEMA and first responders, we were a mass testing site, we hosted graduations for Pasadena Unified, and many, many community events, including some commercial events, where we had Disney and Tribeca come in and do drive-ins. And our team was one of the most successful financially during the pandemic. We still had losses. Every building during the pandemic had losses, but we were unbelievably successful, and we tried to mitigate those losses. And as we look forward to the next 100 years, our goal is to continue to be entrepreneurial, but really embrace what makes the Rose Bowl special. As I mentioned, I coach Little League, I live in the area, and when I came here from San Francisco nine years ago, what really set this place, what set this opportunity apart is the setting. It's amazing. A city of 150,000 probably shouldn't have a stadium that big in a beautiful setting like that, but we do. And as we go out and we look for new opportunities, that's one of the biggest things that we see. This is one of the most competitive markets in the world. SoFi Stadium was just built, it's a $5 billion stadium, and we will never out SoFi, SoFi Stadium. But our setting can't be replicated anywhere in the world. And when we take partners that want to be our partners on events and activities, and we walk them into that area, they are blown away by that setting and how beautiful it is. And we have to thank you, because that setting is your neighborhood, and we are your neighbors. And so we need to take that very seriously. And when we look at doing other activities in the Arroyo, we need to look at all constituents, because we understand that our events impact you more than any other resident in Pasadena. And you may have seen, we've been going to city council quite frequently, that's, I'll probably be seeing Steve and Mayor Gordo quite often in city council, because they've asked us to look at other things that we can do. Because coming out of the pandemic, 100-year-old building has a lot of capital needs, and we're in a very competitive market. So we are looking at other opportunities in the Arroyo and in the stadium, but one of the things that we believe very strongly is that we can't lose what's magical about the Rose Bowl, and what's magical is its setting. And I personally am buoyed by the sentiment that you hear from city council about we, and together we need to find ways to sustain the stadium. Our foundation, the Legacy Foundation, has been unbelievably successful. They're coming up on a $40 million campaign in completion, hopefully in the next month. And they've also gone out and they've gotten quite a few grants. We got a $10 million grant from the federal government, and I'm probably breaking news here, I think I saw Pasadena Now here, so this will probably be in the paper, but we're excited that hopefully tomorrow, we're going to announce that in the California state budget, that we got, that we received another $3 million in this upcoming year for infrastructure, gas lines at the stadium. We'd like to thank Dominic and Senator Anthony Portantino, and Representative Holden, who have really stepped up for us and realized how important this building is, not only to Pasadena, but to the county and to the state. And that's something we're really committed to, is to not put the burden of this building, that is a beautiful, beautiful building, on only 150,000 people in the city of Pasadena. And so you have our commitment that we are thinking big, and we're looking at all opportunities to make sure that we don't go and do things in the Arroyo that might make a couple extra dollars, that change the elemental nature of what makes us magical. And so with that, I have, Meredith is waving a ticket at me. She told me not to forget that at our table back there, we actually have some tickets for all District 6 residents to AmeriFest, which is coming up here on Monday. And we're excited, we have a music festival coming up on the 9th, featuring Willie Nelson and Casey Musgraves on our golf course, which is an area that we've really thrived. Our music festival is a property we're really proud of, because we're embracing our site, and that event takes place almost entirely on the golf course. And we have a really busy summer of events and activities, and we really hope that you'll come down and partake with us, and that you'll also give us your feedback. We know that our events have impacts on you, and our job is, number one, not to surprise you. We have a neighborhood newsletter that goes out, that tells you about all the events that are happening that week, but also throughout the month. And if you don't get that email, please check in with Meredith and I at our table, and we'd love to add you to that, because we never want to surprise you with one of our events. But even when you know there's an event going on, we want to make sure we minimize those impacts. And we have an event hotline number that we can give you, and someone will always answer that number when you call during an event, the week of, to answer any questions that you have about things that are going on. And we want to fix those in real time. We don't want to hear the day after, we'd like to hear during the event. We have an outside-the-fence-line management manager that will come to your house and will check on it, and if the sound sounds loud, we'll go there and we'll have our sound monitors check it, and we'll get with the sound company, we'll try and fix it on the night of. And we found that that is the best way for us to get real-time info, not just to you, but to our partners that want to continue to live down in the Arroyo and embrace what we believe is so great about it. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, or if we're behind, I don't know if I'm allowed to have questions, so I'll let Steve dictate on that one.
Certainly are, Jens. So questions for Jens, and I do really applaud your attitude, and it's the right one to be all about the neighbors and the residents, and it's one of the things that Daryl Dunn was so good at. You know, I said at Daryl's, one of, a couple of Daryl's retirement functions, that, you know, I got, received many complaints about the events, and sometimes the attendees, the patrons, what had traffic, never heard a single complaint about Daryl Dunn, because he listened and was responsive and available. And I know, Jens, you're going to follow that and take it even beyond, so thank you. You know, it's so interesting to hear the Rose Bowl talking about federal funding, state funding, you know, and I talk a lot about how, you know, we all learned the three-layered cake of government in school, you know, the local, state, and federal government, but increasingly, you know, we're really like a marbled cake, where the federal government's involved, the state government's involved. Mayor Gordo and I have close relationships with Governor Newsom and with our US Senator, Alex Padilla, for example, and we play all of those cards, believe me, on the World Cup. We did, and we will continue. You know, regrettably, the FIFA, an organization that runs World Cup, they chose to go with SoFi, with the new $5 billion stadium. We were disappointed in that. We think the Rose Bowl, which has successfully hosted two World Cups, you know, the men's in '94, if I recall, and the women's in '99 with Brandy Chastain, probably the most iconic event in women's athletics, period, and certainly one of soccer's greatest events. You know, the classic setting, the historic, you know, nature, the fact that we can see 25,000 or 30,000 more families, especially working families who do follow soccer closely and all. We thought it would have been great to designate our area as a super venue, have the Rose Bowl and SoFi Stadium. They chose to just go in the direction of SoFi. SoFi, incidentally, a $5 billion stadium, which does not have room for a soccer pitch on the field. So immediately, they have to spend $30 to $50 million to redesign and renovate this brand-new stadium, just to be able to accommodate a soccer pitch for World Cup. But you could just tell FIFA was all about the luxury suites, they didn't care about the smaller, smaller capacity, and about the fact that obviously, in that $5 billion construction, soccer wasn't anywhere on their minds. Well, soccer is always on our mind, and we have some very big and important matches coming up this summer, and we're going to compete very strongly for the Olympics, which are here in our area in 2028. So lots of challenges ahead of us, and we look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Steve.
Jens, thank you so much. We have an item sort of down toward the bottom of the agenda entitled Transitions, and I think I'll just cover that right now. I mentioned Cynthia Kurtz, our outstanding interim city manager. By the way, we have been deeply involved in a recruitment process for the new permanent city manager. Cynthia reminds us daily of the need to have a new city manager, and expect an announcement very, very soon about that, and we're very excited about that. We have a number of department head positions that are open. Jeff, as we mentioned, is the interim water and power. That's one of the best jobs in public power and water in the country, so I'm sure we'll have a great replacement ultimately there. Police chief, we have an interim, as you heard, and that position will be one that the new city manager will work to fill. And our next speaker, David Klug, who's the Director of Economic Development, was recently promoted to that position. He's a longtime staffer. I've really enjoyed working with David on the years that I've been on the council, and he's going to talk a bit about economic development in District 6. Very, very important, because none of what we're talking about up here can we do if we don't have a vibrant economy for Pasadena. So David, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It was a great choice.
Also a resident of Pasadena.
Thank you very much. And a lot of smart people up here in terms of their choices, so thank you. David Klug, please welcome in.
Thank you. It's nice to be here and finally see some faces without masks and being in the same room and able to talk to each other. So I'll give a brief overview of Pasadena's economy. You know, we hear recession, and we hear different reports out there, things are going bad, but we look at our numbers, we're doing pretty good, I have to say. I mean, we're at 4.9% unemployment rate. I can compare that to first quarter of 2021, where it's 8.7. That's not on your sheet, it's on mine. So we track these items, and these are kind of our economic indicators and drivers of the economy. I'm not going to go into every one of these, but one thing that we do pay attention to is our hotel occupancy tax. First quarter 2021 was 45%. It's now pushing over 60, and I saw a report recently where it's almost hitting 70 and exceeding 70. So that's really good news for the city, because we do, we do well with our occupancy taxes in our hotels. So let's skip on to the next slide. You may have heard some exciting things have happened in Pasadena recently. We have some really good Fortune 500 companies coming in Pasadena, and the first one is GM. And GM is the General Motors Advanced Design Studio. They moved from North Hollywood, and now they're taking a building at Sierra Madre Villa in North Rosemead in East Pasadena. So I know it's not District 6, but it is pretty exciting for the city overall. And Zenkor is another, they make drugs to help us with cancer treatments and other autoimmune diseases. Recently signed a lease, and we're excited to have them. They started in Pasadena from Caltech, and they decided to move out of Pasadena, because they grew up, and they got so big that they needed to come home to Pasadena. So now they're back, and we want to keep them here, and we want them to stay here for a long time. And Dohini Eye Institute is also recently had their grand opening there in the former Avery Dennison Building. And many of you may have been at their grand opening last week, and I just, I was there, and what they've done in that building is absolutely amazing. It's a beautiful building. So Ten West Walnut, or some people might know it as the Parsons Project or Lincoln Properties, but Ten West Walnut, we had an announcement a week or two ago for Dine Brands Global, and they're the parent company of Applebee's and IHOP restaurants. They'll be taking about 92,000 square feet in that new development there. So we're excited about some activity finally coming into those new buildings. So if we look at some other areas in old Pasadena specifically, we're looking at 32 West Colorado Boulevard. There's a new electric car called Lucid Motors, and they are in Mills Place Alley on the corner across from Jake's Hamburgers, if you can kind of picture where that is. It's under construction now, and they're very expensive cars. The entry level is about $78,000. So everybody go buy one, so we can get some good tax money for our city. Okay. So I'll just go through some other tenants that have come in. Maybe you paid attention, maybe you haven't, but there will be some in here. And what I also want to note is their locations, because it will show you the kind of company that Pasadena keeps. So Parachute, they're a bath linens and decor store, open in January on Colorado. We have another Brilliant Earth at One Colorado, they're an ethical diamond and jewelry store. And the locations, West Hollywood, La Jolla, Palo Alto, San Francisco, and Pasadena. I mean, I think that says a lot about our city. Alfred Coffee, opening July 1st. So that's kind of a little, this weekend. We have another one, Gorhana, they are also a jewelry store. Malibu, Laguna Beach, Manhattan Beach. Pasadena is really attracting some very nice, high-end tenants. Circa Lighting, set to open this year. 111 West Colorado Boulevard, again, Laguna Niguel, San Diego, West Hollywood. And the next one is 161 West Colorado, that's the former Surletab, and again, Santa Monica, La Brea, San Francisco. And we're really seeing a lot of the home interior design stores kind of cluster in old Pasadena. We have another Herman Miller store, which is- We have another Herman Miller Store, which is the former Chico's in old Pasadena. There's actually, the, the, I was shocked at how much these chairs cost. I mean, it's like, are you kidding me? I mean, there's, there's an old chair in my office that I found out today, it's from 1975. Ruth was there with me. But the guy said it's, oh, it's like $2,000. Like, why is it in my office? I shouldn't have, I should have one of those. But anyhow, just to kind of round it out, Craft by Smoke &amp; Fire, it's another restaurant that just opened, 30 West Green Street. And the last one is Agnes. If you haven't been there, it's, you know, I'm not promoting the restaurant or the food or anything, but it's really beautiful space just to go look at and maybe have a glass of wine. I don't know. But it's a lot of fun. I love doing this job. It's great. We have a lot of things happening in Pasadena with GM and Zenkor. And, you know, there's a lot of good things happening and brewing that we really can't say tonight, but we are working on a lot of things that, that I think the city will be proud of. So, that concludes. We have a question.
Thank you. I see at least one question, David, and I'll have a comment or two as well. Please.
I'm interested in tech development.
Yes.
You know, Caltech being here since 1908 or whatever it was, you know, Pasadena's developed, it's got environment, given its intellectual activity, it goes on in the city. I think you can continue to do that kind of thing, really build in Pasadena.
Yeah, no question.
Will you repeat the question, David?
Oh, yeah, sure. The gentleman is interested in tech development and believes that there's a, a market here for it, given that we have the Caltech in our backyard. So, I think this week I've had three meetings and what they call, it's called now life sciences, right? So it's the biotech, it's the research, it's, that is a very hot topic. And there are a lot of folks buzzing around, looking for sites for that. And I think we'll see some good news coming very shortly. So, thank you.
It's, it's a great point and it's a segue to an item that we're not going to be able to discuss tonight at length, and that's the South Fair Oaks specific plan, which you'll remember 20-plus years ago when it was adopted, it was intended to promote a sort of biotech corridor there in South Fair Oaks, South Arroyo, South Raymond. And we had the, the amended plan to council. We had a very extensive hearing about it. I actually opposed the, that iteration. It's coming back on July 11th. And what we're seeing, this could be the subject of another whole meeting, but I'm, I'm so delighted with this economic development because what the state is really imposing is more and more requirements that we allow more and more housing. And I don't need to tell you all, the, the housing market is so through the roof price-wise for so many reasons that if you give developers an option, generally, they're going to choose housing, especially with COVID and remote work and what have you. And, and, you know, I'm fine with, with housing. We need housing. We, we've built and developed a lot of affordable housing in Pasadena. But we really do, and I know the mayor and I are on the absolutely same page about this, and he's been a real stalwart in terms of standing up to Sacramento, in terms of where these decisions should be made and, and who gets to make them, you know, about what our quality of life should look like and where the affordable housing and how it should be brought in. You all remember, you know, just on the other side of the stump from here, the Westgate Apartments that were built when the Ambassador College was turned over and then was the subject of, of development. And, you know, we have almost 1,000 units there. We just took all of those units and put them into a Joint Powers Authority using some tax incentives. And it's slowly becoming almost all workforce affordable housing with a substantial tranche, also a very low-income housing. So Pasadena is a city that cares about affordable housing and wants to do it, but wants to do it our way with our sort of planning and future. This economic, if you've ever read The City by Joel Kotkin, one of my favorite books, it talks about the, every great city. He looks across history at the great cities and he finds three common elements. We've talked about each of them already in the last hour in this meeting. Number one, it's got to be clean and safe. If people don't feel safe, if it's not clean, you're going to have problems and you can't be a great city. Number two, you need commerce. You need economic activity to bring people, to drive the economics of all the great things that you want to do as a city. And number three, you need what he calls sacred places, not sacred in a religious sense, but iconic places that draw people. I would put the Rose Bowl, you know, at the top of the list for that. And we have many others here. So, we definitely need this component. Ruth Martinez, you gave a shout out to, David, she's been with your department for, for a number of years and does a great job as well. I will tell you, GM is not in our district, but Art Center, a big reason why that design center's here, is in our district, both campuses, and we're super proud about that. That, it used to be called Dynaequity. I think they changed the name slightly, but that's IHOP and Applebee's, that's like hundreds, if not thousands, of restaurants around the world. That's the corporate headquarters. We're really proud about that attraction to bring them over from our neighbor Glendale. If you haven't visited that, Parsons Projects, I know there are different opinions about the design and the sort of massing and articulation and all, but it's a quality project. And I'm excited about the, the office space and the, the retail. So, thank you. Thank you, David, very much. To be continued. And again, that's all a good segue to our next speaker, who, you know, I think the best housing director in the state, Bill Wong, who cares deeply about affordable housing and is a real expert and has just maximized the opportunities for funding and for affordable housing development. And Bill, come on up and talk to us about what you're working on these days. Bill Wong, Affordable Housing, Housing Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison. I'll just jump right into it. Affordable housing is a, is an issue that is top of mind because the housing crisis, affordability crisis is touching so, such a large segment of our population. Am I, am I turning it here, Danny? Are you doing it?
Yeah.
Which button?
Three.
There we go. Okay. So this is the, a map of the existing affordable housing here in Pasadena. The bigger dots represent affordable housing developments. The little, small yellow dots, those are, are rental assistance households, Section Eight households most, most commonly. So those are where we provide rental assistance for those households who cannot afford rent on their own. So in total, what it shows is 4,000, over 4,300 households here in Pasadena are living in some sort of affordable housing. In Council District Number Six, there are 846 households here. Oops, that went too fast. Homelessness is, is a top-of-mind issue as well. It's where the affordable housing crisis really hits home and is the most, the, the most important area to address. In the state, from 2010 to 2020, homelessness has gone up statewide 30, 31%. In the county of Los Angeles, it's gone up about 49%. And in, in Pasadena, during the same period, it's gone down over 55%. But you notice the number 512, which we counted in January of this month, 512 of our neighbors are experiencing homelessness on any given night. So we have a tremendous amount of work yet to do and we're really laser-focused on addressing this issue. So what are our affordable, what are our affordable housing priorities? Permanent housing for the homeless population. It's taken us a long time to realize this, but we finally figured out that the only thing that ends homelessness is a permanent house, permanent home. And so we're focused on that for our chronic homeless neighbors, as well as those, the majority of those who are experiencing homelessness are homeless for economic reasons. So we want to get more, make sure there's more permanent housing available for that population. And then also, we want to continue and increase our homeless prevention programs. It makes more sense for us to help people, households stay housed rather than to wait for them to fall into homelessness and try to bring them back out. We do need interim housing, including emergency shelter capacity, as well as a special focus on the PCC homeless student population, which they estimate at over 900 students. And then we need affordable rental units, affordable apartments for a wide segment of our population, seniors, families, as well as some affordable accessory dwelling units. And then moderate income units. It used to be that when we talked about affordable housing, we were just thinking about very low and low-income households. Now, there's a huge need for moderate income housing or sometimes referred to as workforce housing. So we need rental housing for that population as well as affordable homeownership opportunities. Affordable condominiums for first-time homebuyers. And then we need more funding for affordable housing overall. So these are kind of our priorities. And I, now I want to walk you through some of the things that we're actually doing. So currently today, there are 658 affordable housing units under construction throughout the city today. We have another, almost 200 units that are in the pipeline or in pre-development. And then for the moderate income workforce housing segment, we have 933 units that, that were luxury apartment buildings that now are being transitioned to moderate income rental units. And those include the Westgate Apartments, Phases One, Two and Three, the Theo Apartments and the Hudson Avenue Apartments as well. And then, because we have so much, so much affordable housing, City Council has been very supportive of us. We've been, and the community's been very supportive. We got all of these projects under construction. We need more money to build more housing. And so in, so Senator Portantino introduced Senate Bill 1177 to create a new affordable housing fund specifically for Burbank, Glendale and Pasadena. And when the governor signs the new state budget, hopefully within the next few days, it will include $23 million for this new affordable housing fund. Just to give you a few visuals, in terms of permanent housing for chronically homeless individuals, this is a development with the Salvation Army that is currently under construction. It's on the corner of Walnut and Catalina. It'll be 66 units for chronically homeless individuals with about a dozen units for formerly homeless veterans. And it'll sit above a state-of-the-art food pantry that deals with the food insecurity issue. This is a, another permanent supportive housing project for chronically homeless seniors. This is because seniors are being hit especially hard today by rising housing costs because oftentimes they're on fixed incomes. And when those incomes are low, are very low, they get priced out of the market very quickly. The average social security payment across the United States is about $1,500. That's the average payment. The, a one-bedroom unit in northwest Pasadena is $1,900. So the entire social security check could not afford just rent, let alone food, how, food, medicine, transportation, clothing, et cetera. So this is 66, 69 units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless seniors, and this will break ground next Wednesday. It's at the corner of Fair Oaks and Orange And then for those that are not, not chronically homeless, so the majority of persons experiencing homelessness, they're homeless for economic reasons. And most of the time, you wouldn't even recognize that they are homeless because they don't present as homeless, but they've lost their job, they have very little support, et cetera. And so, a program that we run is called Rapid Rehousing, where we would provide short-term rental assistance for these individuals so that after six months, a year or so, they can begin to pay their own rent once they get back on their feet. And so it's Rapid Rehousing. And so, this is a Caltrans house that was acquired by the city and we utilized it to house three formerly homeless women. They each get permanent housing, so it's not a shelter, it's permanent housing. They each rent a room, which they could afford based on a minimum wage job. And two out of the three women have already transitioned off of rental subsidy because they're working full-time and they don't need the rental subsidy anymore. And then we built a accessory dwelling unit behind it and that will house another person who's formerly experiencing This is a, a existing building that we acquired for rental housing for some individuals and for some families. This is up on Fair Oaks. We acquired this last year. And then this is a, a new project that is currently under construction. It's got over 180 units. It's near, just north of the Fuller Seminary Campus. And it is micro-units, affordable micro-units. Okay? And then a development that is being proposed on city-owned land across the street from City Hall. We call this the Ramona Seniors Project. It'll be approximately 110 units of low-income housing for, for seniors. Accessory dwelling units are, are being produced and applied for and produced throughout California. These numbers come from the Planning Department. It's their, what's happening here in Pasadena. But what we're, we're interested in is can these accessory dwelling units really be affordable housing? And so we have a pilot program where we are providing construction financing to homeowners to build an accessory dwelling unit with the requirement that they rent exclusively to our rental assistance households, our Section Eight households, who are all at very low income and for a period of seven years. And so, we have five ADUs in the works. Three of them are under construction right now. The other two are getting ready to start soon. And in terms of the missing middle rental housing, this is the Theo Apartments, one of the ones that was recently acquired and converted to moderate income housing. Westgate Apartments also, Phases One, Two and Three. And then also homeownership is important. Not only are rents sky-high, but acquisition prices are sky-high. And so, we've been active in funding affordable homeownership developments. This is one up on Fair Oaks that was recently completed. 16 units, including a historic house, this red house that was moved, relocated onto the site, restored and converted into two condominiums. And then the sort of gray building, you see a little piece of the gray building in the forefront, that wraps around the project. And those are new affordable condominiums. Under construction, we have, this is about 45 units under construction at the corner of Lincoln and Orange Grove. And this will also be affordable first-time homebuyer units. And then we hope in about, within six months, we'll start construction on another project. This is over on Walnut near the Honda Dealer. Will be about another 60 units of first-time homebuyer affordable units. Okay? Questions? Yes, ma'am?
How, I'm asking handling the single, the all- versus the single-family joining laws that passed in January, how, how are we, like, how do you see our neighborhoods still neighborhoods?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I think you're referring to SB9. Yes. So that is something that the, the Planning Department is taking the lead on in terms of how that could, will be able to get implemented here in Pasadena and where, what neighborhoods will, it'll be, it'll apply to. So that, that's really something that the Planning Department should weigh in on. We're the affordable housing department, basically, so we don't issue permits, but I don't know if...
Yeah, David Reyes, who's now the interim city manager and his staffer, not here this evening, but SB9 has been a big bone of contention for us. And we've adopted a fairly aggressive ordinance to comply with SB9, but also protect our historic neighborhoods and landmark districts. We had some sort of lawyer letters go back and forth with the Attorney General about that. The, the mayor did an outstanding job, masterful job really, of sort of achieving détente there. And I, you know, I don't think it's had the effect that it could or that we fear that it, it might. So, but boy, you've got to sleep with one eye open about these constant bills that come out. I'm the Chair of the Legislative Policy Committee of the council and hardly a meeting goes by where we don't have at least one. We just had one this week where we took a strong oppose position to the state senator from, from San Francisco, Scott Weiner, who's the author of many of these legislation, you know. legislation, you know. So it's important, important point. But I want to try to move along because we really try to stay on time. And we're so appreciative, Bill. We're very proud of that project on Waverly that you highlighted, the transitional housing for for women, very low income. It's been a great success. The neighborhood's embraced it. It's a Caltrans former Caltrans home, and we'll have more opportunities like that or the opportunity perhaps to sell that market value and then use those funds to create even more affordable housing throughout the city. So thank you very much, Bill Wong.
Thank you.
I do want to mention, as our new still relatively new Director of Public Works, Tony Olmos and his engineer Joe Conroy make their way up, that we will not be able to get to the library continuation measure. That is very important. I do want to offer two things. One, it'll be coming to the council later this summer to put on the ballot in November to continue that parcel tax to support our libraries. We're very supportive as a council and a city. And we have Arnie Segal, whom I'm sure many of you know from his long and deep work in the community, and Janice Segal, a different spelling of Segal. They're they're not related, as far as I know, but Arnie and Janice are back at the table there and have information about that that initiative. So please stop by there if that's an issue that you are interested in. Tony Olmos, I know you want to talk about one project in particular, if you can just take a couple of minutes. And then we have some gifts. I don't know if you caught that, but Jen's and Meredith Thomas from the Rose Bowl do have some tickets for for America Fest, the best fireworks show in America. And then we'll have a raffle, but you have to be here to win. So don't don't run off just yet. Tony, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison. As as a council member said, I am new to the city. I've been here as of tomorrow, it'll be eight months. So I come to you from a lot of different cities that I've worked in in Southern California for the last 29 years with in public works. And it's just been, you know, like the chief said earlier, it's just been fantastic to work here. So what I'll do, I'll provide a brief background and overview, you know, in terms of what we're going to present today. And then I'll turn it over to one of our younger engineers that just joined us, and we're lucky to steal him from the private sector. You know, he's been here for four months. So together, we'll cover any questions you might have at the end if there's time. But basically, my department, Public Works, we're in charge of maintaining all the city streets. And I know there was a question about trees and watering. I can give you my card. I can certainly follow up on that. We also maintain all the city facilities. And then we also are responsible for all the trash collection and all the recycling. I know that a lot of you have heard about the organic recycling program, and there's more to come on that. We have a whole outreach program that we're going to be rolling out very soon that you'll start hearing about in terms of how you how you can comply with the latest rule that came out regarding organic recycling. And one of the bigger parts of our operation is a capital improvement program. We're in charge. City Council, thankfully, is very supportive of of keeping up with the infrastructure. They always support projects that are going to do that. And when they approve the state, the capital improvement program, you know, in the fiscal year, then we start working on it. We have 12 projects that are that we're working on in this next fiscal year in District Six. We have a map in the back. If you had time or maybe afterwards, you can take a look at which ones we're working on. But the biggest project that we have, this Arroyo Seco water reuse, and that's what we wanted to share with you, a quick update. And if there's any other questions you can ask. So that's with that, I'll turn it over to Joe, and then he'll he'll walk through the presentation. So thank you.
Yep. Thank you. As Tony said, my name is Joe Conroy, and I'm working on the Arroyo Seco Water Reuse Project. So the project started because the state water resources, state water board, Control Board, set out these mandates for some bacterial levels that had to be brought down to more manageable levels. And, you know, because there's E. coli and other things in our stormwater. And stormwater as itself is very dirty, and we wanted to try and treat it naturally without using pumps and plants as much as possible. So we have a mandate that is set for next for September of 2023. And right now, we're in design for two locations in a joint project that we have with the city of South Pasadena. The projects themselves, they're going to try and restore some of the native habitat and wetlands in the areas, and also restore native native plants local to the California. And we also want to try and improve visual aesthetics and access to some of these areas as right now, one of them is pretty overgrown. You'll see in some of the slides later. And the other one, it's accessible now through the equestrian area down on the Arroyo Seco, south of the San Rafael Avenue Bridge. So I'll talk more about that later. So as you can see here, this is a zoomed up zoomed in view of the Arroyo Seco, showing a lot of the parks along the Arroyo in South Pasadena. If you look at Site One, that is called the San Rafael Site, and it's where San Rafael Creek joins to the Arroyo. And you can see here in this picture, that's actually the San Rafael Creek. Generally, it is actually a pipe that's underground through the neighborhood, but it actually comes out and it's above ground right before it joins to the Arroyo, where we plan to have our first location. The second location is in South Pasadena. As you can see here, it's right above the skate park and the golf course there. And at that site, we also plan to try and reduce the use of potable water for irrigation by reusing the stormwater from the stream. Here we have another zoomed in view of the Arroyo Seco Channel or the San Rafael Creek Site, Site One, which is all within the city of Pasadena. And these are some of the existing conditions. You can see the access point in Picture One, which shows the bridge that is there for maintenance and for pedestrians. As you as you get to from the equestrian center, you can cross the Arroyo there. Picture Two is actually showing some of the issues that we're trying to address with the bacteria levels in the creek. And you can see the green slime. It's not really inviting and not really something we want to keep seeing in the future. And then again, Pictures Three and Four and Five are showing the existing nature of the site. In Site Two, this is the San Pasquale Site, and it's mostly located within the city of South Pasadena. And in Site One, you're actually looking at back toward the baseball and soccer fields. And Picture Two, this is actually the overgrown vegetated area where there's a small creek next to the Arroyo that no one can access or see. And part of that part of the project will be to redesign the landscape of the area to be able to hold more stormwater and to infiltrate and treat to the ground naturally and restore our aquifers and create drinking water without just create more opportunity for drinking water. And here is just kind of our timeline. Like I said, we are in design right now with completion of design in the fall this year. And then we're planning to go into construction in March of 2023. I know the timeline, it seems a little strange that it's in 2024, but it's actually, we're planning to start construction in March of next year. And again, that's to get in because our mandate is set for September of 2023 to meet the bacterial levels set by the State Water Resources Control Board. We do, we had one community meeting about a month ago, and we actually will have a second one in the fall, probably around our 90% submittal. So it's going to probably be September. If you're interested, please meet us at the back table, and we can get your information and let you know any updates on the projects, if we can also link you to website, the website for the projects.
Yes. And we did get funding from from this from this from the region for this under project Measure W, which was an LA County measure that was passed by the voters for these kinds of projects. And right now, we have about $9 million for this project. So it's a significant investment on behalf of both cities, and we're looking forward to making that making that happen.
I also wanted to add, yeah, so like Tony said, part of it's Measure W, and part of it is also from Senator Portantino. He actually designated this. So it would be a project to join a joint project for the cities of South Pasadena and Pasadena together because it's both mostly our watershed in Pasadena, but they have the space along the Arroyo Seco for us to actually store more water and treat it. So it's actually really helpful for all of us.
So so in closing, I'll just have one plug. We have a citizen service center that is always available for any requests you might have for anything related to services that you see out there in the public right of way. If there's a tree issue, if there's a sidewalk issue or what have you, just make sure you do that or just contact us. And then we'll go ahead and and address those concerns that you may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And Tony, just to close the loop, Citizen Service Center, how can we reach that? On the website?
Yes, on the website, there's a link.
Go to the city's website. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thank you. I know we ran over the time, but it was a lot to cover tonight, and I'm grateful to all of you.